Six P M, Discussion of Tonight's Agenda. Discussion of Consent Items.
Items six A through six I are the recurring, they occur every board meeting, so I'm going, since there's quite a few, I'm gonna bypass those and go with the new ones. Six J is a Western Kentucky University MOA, that's approved to allow having a intern with our nurses. Six K, UK Clinical Practice Agreement, approve allowing a UK student to conduct their student teaching in Bath County Schools. Six L, Summer Feeding, provide consent for food services to provide the summer feeding program. Six M, renew our KED membership to provide special development opportunities to all our staff. Six N, University of Arkansas Nursing Agreement, approve allowing a University of Arkansas student to intern with our nurses. Six O, this is a long detailed one, if you have any questions, Ms. Witt would be happy to provide any extra information. But temporary relocation of Head Start students with disabilities to OES due to structural damage to the Bath County Head Start facility. The building has been deemed hazardous, is no longer suitable for occupancy. To uphold the district's obligation to provide a free, appropriate public education, Bath County Schools proposes that students with disabilities enrolled in Head Start temporarily receiving their special education and related services at Owensville Elementary School at the school age childcare program for the remainder of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Six P, SACC and Adult Care Food Program, request approval to continue participation in the SAC and Adult Care Food Care Program. Six Q, five oh four chair persons presented for the SY twenty-five, twenty-six. In consultation with Section five oh four District Coordinator, the superintendent will recommend that the Board for Approval a list of five oh four team chair persons for job positions titled for Bath County Board of Education, Section five oh four Procedures. Six R, Admissions and Release Committee as presented for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. In consultation with the Director of Special Education, the superintendent will recommend a list of Bath County School District Representatives for the Mission and Release Committee. Six S, May one, twenty-twenty-five Staffing allocations, approve the staffing allocations for each school based upon the staffing ratio guidelines. Six T, Job Description for Office Manager Payroll Assistant. Six U, Job Description for Payroll and Grants Analyst. Six V, KDE Indirect Cost Report, just need to approve this annual report. Six W, Principals Combining Budget, approve Principals Combining Budget for all schools. Six X, approved Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-five Audit Contract with KG, SG, PSC, this is an annual renewal for school auditor. Six Y, approved the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six Technology Plan. Six Z, approved Recommendations for Bidding Services. And six double A, approve a surplus sale. Those are the consent items.
Item four, Construction Update in Bath County Middle School, renovation with Pax Walker and Ross Tarrant.
Hi, everyone. I think we're gonna start with the high school updates and then we'll move over to the middle school, because there are a few pieces we wanna update you on regarding the abatement process, agenda items for the middle school, but we'll start with the high school first.
Yeah, several items. Just give you a quick update on the work at the high school. Things are progressing, I think smoothly, working in the gymnasium and putting the duck work up. I think middle of next month, we should have permanent power, I mean, as far as heating and cooling, that should be going. Then they continue working there in the gym. And so, schedule wise, I think we're on schedule as far as being completed at the end of June, so I think it's still, still a good date. Next few days, we'll be installing ceiling grid and getting above ceiling inspections, all the duck work in areas should be insulated. We'll start up the gym, heating, cooling systems. We got some CMU work, just some minor CMU work we need to do, installing some grills. We got some paint that we need to complete, all doors and hardware, we've been installing doors and hardware at the time. And the locker rooms, I don't know of any big issues. We're doing some punch list work trying to finish up layback. We got a little bit of touch-up painting. Got some doors and hardware issues we're trying to address in both layback and the high school project. We got maybe a petition or two in the restrooms that we're trying, again, these are, a lot of these are punch list items. We got some locker room lighting where I think we got a solution there. We had a little problem, so we're addressing that. The commissioning or the third-party inspection of the HVA system and electrical components, that has started. And so, thanks for wrapping up. Certainly entertain any questions. We have met with your staff on the parking lot, roadway, as far as asphalt paving, we're starting to get a plan on that. And I know last month, we talked about a budget, and so we've been, we did a walkthrough trying to determine what areas need to be milled and repaved and areas just to be an overlay. So I think we're getting a handle on that and hopefully next month, maybe next month, hopefully we'll have that to review as far as the price for you all to consider. And I think that's it. Certainly entertain any questions that you might have that Jonathan and/or I might be able to respond. If not, Jonathan?
We're still not gonna be able to have graduation in the gym, right?
What's the date?
May thirty-first.
Well, you'll have heating and cooling. I'm not for sure, what do you think, Jonathan? I mean, I think it'll be, let's get back, I mean, it might be possible. We will check on that and see if we can do that. May thirty-first? Okay.
If you could do that, that'd be excellent, because the current plan is to be outside and it will not rain inside, I promise. That'd be great.
The only piece I'll add to the construction update for the high school is that last month, you all were presented a price and approved a change order for roof repairs. Had like three roof drains and one area above the kitchen that was, that was leaking. I just wanted you to know that the roofer has done the flashing repairs to the roof drains that are above the lobby in front of the gym. They're currently working through or about to start the flashing repair above the kitchen. So all to say, you shouldn't see any issues with the roof drains that were causing some stains to the ceiling tiles just close by, near the cafeteria, but just an update on the kitchen piece, they're about to start that work altogether. So just a small update on where that progress is, because I know that was important for you all to get addressed soon. But as David mentioned, if there are any questions, we can answer those. If not, the other items on the agenda relate to the middle school and we can dig into that if you feel there are no other items to discuss with the high school.
I think we're good.
Okay. So to look at the high school items, I think the first thing we should talk through is a summary of what was discussed at the high school with the potential abatement consultant, the CM, David's or Pax Walker's crew, myself, Silco, my principal, and engineers with a few of the representatives from the district at the middle school. All to say, we all looked at all the areas that were previously identified as hotspots for abatement in the school, most of which, I think if we scroll to the next page, show up in the area underneath the stage and the crawl space that surrounds it.
Mr. Reese, just FYI, they can't see what you're talking about.
Okay. So if you could just imagine the stage area, there's like a restroom that you can go off in the hallway and go down some steps and there's what they currently have for in-school suspension underneath the stage. That area is the only zone that has some flooring that is, or has been noted to be a hotspot that would get removed. Then we also looked at the crawl space that goes underneath the entire school and noticed that there was a lot of the plumbing and mechanical piping insulation that would be needed for abatement. So all to say, we know that most of the stuff is underneath the school and to address that, the proposal in front of you from Airsource Technology is to do a complete survey of the building for any additional items that we don't know right now are concerns for abatement. What you're seeing right now on the screen in red is just the footprint of the existing, or an existing, the original nineteen thirty-eight part of the building. The area in blue are the portions of the nineteen seventy addition that will be included in the survey. We excluded the two thousand and six portion of the building because that was beyond any time that any asbestos would be used in your building. So just to know that the estimate in front of you from the proposal is to include both of the red and the blue zones as a full survey to make sure that there's nothing else like windows or any other kind of adhesive that could have been missed in past abatement surveys. I bring that up because the agenda item for Airsource's proposal is asking for you all to determine how far you want the survey to go. And at the final page of that Airsource Technology proposal, which I think if you, if we can go to the final page of this PDF on the screen, yeah, the very final page, it's up to the board if you want certain items to be included in the scope. What I have marked off here with the X's in red are what we would recommend, that you have the consultant provide in their survey and descriptions of what each of these tasks are included in the first three pages. I wanted to just point out that we crossed out line item number two because there will be specifications that will be a part of what my team will do and specify in coordination with Airsource. I'm just letting you know that this proposal here does not need to include that service because that service is gonna be covered through our agreement with Airsource Technology. So in the estimated total column, you see that Airsource Technology is asking for ninety-two, nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That is assuming they did specifications directly with you all, which would not help you because you all wouldn't be doing the drawings, so that cost would be absorbed in our design team contract with Airsource. What you all would be considering is including task for the survey and report for thirty-six fifty, the if required project oversight of a hundred sixty dollars per hour. I believe the math in here estimates that's about eight hours of potential work. And then items for A and for B are for them to make sure that they test and get some confirmed results back from items that they sample and to maintain some air monitoring in the building as they remove the items. So the real reason I have to show all that is because here's what you're hopefully agreeing to after the BG one potentially is acceptable to you all, so that we can get the abatement process started in time for the summer, so that there's no kids in the building.
What's the finalized number? I can see a seven.
The finalized number would be seventy, seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And this would be just like your other services or professional services, like you with the high school, where it's a, it's an agreement to pay this maximum amount if it needs to happen, meaning if there's no additional project oversight, then Airsource would not be charging you a hundred sixty dollars for each hour that they didn't work. So a limit to not exceed ultimately is what the seventy-two hundred, seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollar quote would be at the worst-case scenario. And if they don't need to do as much site visits, then that cost will go down for a hundred sixty hours, a hundred sixty dollars per hour that they don't come on site. Any questions on this proposal for the middle school? Okay. If we can go back to the first page of this PDF, maybe the photo could kind of explain where the potential abatement items are that are beyond the ones that we know for sure from past surveys. So in the bottom, or if we can zoom into the images to the bottom left of the page, that's one instance of where the backside of the building, there's some windows up high that are single pan glass that we would likely replace anyways with the window replacement scope. However, we suspect that the mastic in that window assembly itself might be something that would be a part of the abatement process. If it is, or if any of the other windows have any portions of them that have to be abated, clearly, we wouldn't want you all to have temporary plywood up until a new window can come in place, because abatement would have to start sooner and not necessarily in the right timeline as a new window coming in. And so, part of the other agenda items or backup items for us to discuss through is the potential for windows or plumbing to be not alternate scope, that was previously discussed, but if in fact it has to happen for the abatement, then that might require for the full plumbing or window scope to be in the base bid, understanding of scope. Does that make sense ultimately?
So that means even if we don't have money to do windows, it's gotta be included in the base price?
This is after we get Airsource's survey confirming windows are an issue, which we don't know for sure yet. They've looked at it and they're like, maybe, but once we have lab results saying yes for sure windows or plumbing are an issue, then we would have to set you up to where it's not the entire project is in the base bid, but a little bit more of your alternates we recommended to move into the base bid. So we wouldn't set you up to where it's just flat-out unaffordable. We would have to have hard discussions about where do we wanna reduce down other scope items, so that you can get the abatement items for sure addressed fully. The testing would consist of them coming on site, taking samples at some windows, some of the pipe insulation in the crawl space, some of the flooring. They would send it off to a lab. I believe in the report, they say they have like a few days for the lab reports to come back and either confirm or say that it's not a hot issue. And if that is what gets confirmed, then we'll have to react and figure out, okay, what needs to be removed from the scopes that you all could afford, fully replacing the windows that are problematic, or fully replacing all the plumbing that's problematic. The, correct. So the ninety, or the seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollar proposal is just for Airsource to come in and do a full walkthrough, take samples for affected areas that are in our scope, and then just give us a report and specifications to address them. This proposal's not for them to do the removal of the asbestos items themselves. That would have to be a part of a contractor's bid separate from what Airsource is providing as their service. So just clarifying that what you're agreeing to in that proposal is not for them to come in and just take it out, it's for them to identify what it is, their quantities, and ultimately what to do with that information for another contractor to come in and remove it, because they do not offer that service of doing the contracted removal themselves. They only provide the oversight and investigation services.
Jonathan, do you all, is this the only company like you use, or is this, is this like a mandatory statewide thing that you have to do?
Short answer is, you would have to do it if, if, short answer is, it's a goal for us to fully abate the building, full stop, which I know that Airsource Technology has done with this exact building since, I think, since as far as Tim has been involved with the district, maybe around the two thousand and six timeframe when we did the addition. That's as far as we know that Airsource has been in the area. Are they the only ones? No, but they're the most, they're the most familiar with this building and what to do with this building. They just did not do a full survey that they're gonna do this time. They did a targeted survey for, I think, flooring and pipe insulation in the past. Now that we're touching the windows and other parts of the building, we're having them look at everything, just so that you all end up with an asbestos-free abated building fully. Is it required? It's only required if we touch something that ends up hot, because if we don't think it is hot, but it ends up being, contractors are required to stop work, which will then hold up construction. So that's why we wanna do it ahead of time, so that way no other contractor runs across as a surprise. Is there a guarantee that everything will be identified? No, but there's language in here that they have, I think, on allowance or insurance to, to figure out if they, if another contractor does discover something, there's a way to address it and not hold up the schedule and cost you all more money and more time. But it's only required if it's encountered for any scope, whether we anticipated it or not, it's required to be removed because it's a hazardous material. So if it's clear about the proposal, and it's kind of clear about what we looked at and where the potential warning signs are, meaning plumbing insulation might be the entire building, or it might be just a small part underneath the gym versus the windows, it might be half the windows have to be replaced, or maybe it's just one. Those are the pieces I want you to be aware of, because one way or the other, that would impact what for sure gets accepted in the base bid. It does not mean everything that's an alternate moves into the base bid. So it's not an agenda item, but if in your packet, I think I would have sent over a scope breakdown that kind of outlines the base bid versus the alternate items. One of them is highlighted with the assumption that windows come into play or plumbing come to play, and the main difference is on bid day, if none of these items are problematic from the surveyor's report, then you would be looking at what we talked last time about seven point seven million of probable cost to the base bid scope of HVAC, above-ceiling electrical, and roof replacement. If windows and plumbing come into play, that would increase your base bid to be ten point eight million, because now you're doing your HVAC, your ceiling, electrical stuff, your roofing, and your windows, and all of the relevant plumbing items as base bid. So not, you know, exceeding fifteen million, but it goes from seven point seven to ten, ten point eight. If that's clear, then the last thing to talk through is the true agenda items of which version of the BG one we feel is appropriate to proceed with. But I'll pause there, just to make sure. Okay. So the two versions of the BG one you have, there's a cover sheet that has basically the current active BG one marked up, and it has on the top that was amended last Friday, the twenty-fifth. That information doesn't change between version A and version B. What really changes is how you want for the inclusion of equipment or technology network upgrades, how those items, which do not have to happen, but if you feel that it's important to include as part of the renovation, that's the main difference between version A, version B. Version A doesn't include any additional dollars. It's the total of twelve point four million of construction, which includes all of your base bid and alternates. It does not lock you in to spending all that money. It just says, hey, KDE, here's how much we think the entire project would be if all alternates are taken. We will change that or revise the BG one once we know for sure which alternates to take, but right now, we're saying max, we're thinking it's this much. And if you look a little lower, there are some blank spots for equipment furnishings, equipment computers, and technology network, KETS, K-E-T-S. Those say zero, because we did not discuss putting those in there. If you all feel like down the road, there's justification for approving some furniture or equipment, we can easily revise the BG one later down the road and include that in there, but right now, version A says zero dollars for those, because it keeps it true to what we discussed as a scope. Version B puts in some educated assumptions on like what some of those items might be, meaning seventy-five thousand for additional equipment and furnishings such as new desk for the art room, computer labs, science, your special education room, your nurses stations, basically anything that is a room that currently has plumbing embedded within it. If you see it's necessary, there's a line item there for the district to do a direct procurement of whatever desk or furniture that they think is important for this room, there's a line item for that. Underneath that, there's equipment costs for computers that are about fifty thousand, and that's assuming that you are replacing your staff computers, doing new smart boards, copy machines, basically anything that might be office supplies or technology that stays in the room or stays in the building. But we can revisit that later if we end up needing more or less. And the last one is technology network, where I know that the goal will be to work through, or work with KEDC on any of the scope that we're doing already, but there's also a checklist that KDE would require us to work through and make sure that we're following their standards. And if there's anything specific that's outside of our scope that the district ends up needing to do, like security cameras, currently not in the scope, but I know is a big deal for adding at the high school in the Chanel Building, and I think there's a plan to do that for all your buildings. This be another area where you could do it as part of the renovation, we just need to kind of work through how much that would be, so that we can include those devices and infrastructure in the renovation cost. So those are the three items in green. They don't hold you to anything, just kind of wanted to make sure you knew that B assumes some placeholders for those.
So A is just renovation?
Yes.
And you said twelve, what's the?
Twelve point four million construction and no additional district purchased equipment, computers, or technology upgrades, just what the scope is for the renovation.
Does the twelve include the seven point one million from SFCC?
Good question. That's, it's a different set of funds, so this is what we think it would cost. We would use that seven point something million to pay for that work, yes, but this is twelve point four million for what we know the scope of work would cost you all, not necessarily how you all pay with it.
Well, I'm just saying the twelve million, we're looking at about seven out of the SFCC and then five million out of general, or bonding, bonding, not general fund. Okay. And the others are extras that we added in? Security cameras will be extra on top of the extras.
Correct. And at any point, if you all feel that option B isn't good now, but you wanna revisit it later, we can do that. I think that covers all the middle school agenda items from Airsource abatement scope to the BG one options.
Once all this is like- Once all this is like, all of this is submitted, how long would it be before there would be like, we could put out bids?
Good question. We think it's realistic that, you know, pending on how many board meetings we need to have to make sure we have buy-in and whatnot, it should be ready to go for bids in December and then starting in January. If we need more community involvement or if we need to value engineer scope to make sure everything's in the budget, that might play a factor, but let's say everything kind of runs smoothly, I think it should be realistic that December, everything's ready for bid.
Okay. Thanks.
In the schedule of all that, that would mean we get our abatement contractor onboard this summer and then we continue to design everything and, and get it ready to bid for other contractors to do their work in January.
Okay. That's what I want to know.
No, I, I was just going to say, you know, the process is, it's not only the design, we have to sit down with your staff and get a program together, see exactly what, what's needed and what you're wanting to do in addition to all these proposals that we've come up with. I mean, we, we're just sort of saying, this is what we think needs, but time we meet your staff, it could, you know, we don't know your enrollment, you know, just some things we need to go through to be sure, how many students are we planning for and...
You're kind of waiting on us.
There's just a lot of things going. It's not just, you know, coming up with new finishes and this and that, but we have to, we have to investigate, you know, what's above, what's overhead, what's underneath.
You're kind of wait, you're kind of waiting on us to give you that, right?
Pardon?
I said, you're kind of waiting on us to give you that.
Right, right. Yeah, if we get this go-ahead, then we would, then we would start.
Right, Jonathan. Yeah, just, just for clarity, if everything gets approved today, meaning Airsource's proposal and the BG-1, we would start the ground basically next month. We'll have a schedule that's set in stone with all the logistics of how many meetings we think we need with you, with representatives from the middle school. We'll have a lot more stuff concretely laid out, assuming that we're good with the BG-1 this time around and the proposal services for Airsource. I also meant to mention, we do want to make sure that the agenda item acknowledges a, either voiding or cancellation of the active BG-1 that is currently in fact pack in case that comes into play for the new BG-1 that this agenda item would be asking for. Basically boiling it down to what KDE recommends, there's not a way to just change what's currently in the KDE system to match the renovation scope. They said that they would have to ultimately remove it, delete it in accordance to what we think is appropriate by the board attorney for the new one to just get initiated and started in fact pack without any problems.
Thank you, Jonathan. Item five, discussion of policy 03.273, classified retirement.
This is simply the second reading of the certified retirement policy. It was discovered that we, we do our certified and classified policies the same, but our classified policy was written differently. So this simply brings both policies in alignment and they will read exactly the same, both the certified and classified.
Item six, discussion of salary schedules.
Salary schedules were shared by Ms. Combs and I, and you all have had the opportunity to review those. So simply tonight, it is the board's discretion, but we ask that you approve the salary schedules
Item seven, discussion of abolishing two district positions.
When we had ESTER funds, we had the ability to have multiple extra faculty members at no cost to the district. Those funds had expired, but we still asked for the board to keep two positions. We have looked at those and at this time we feel we can spend that money or put that money back in the general fund and, and make better decisions. And so those positions were asked that they be abolished. The people that are in those positions will have jobs, so no one will be losing a job. We'll just take two positions outside the allocation and put those funds back into
Item nine, we're adjourned.
I'd like to call to order this Bath County Board of Education regular meeting, April 28, 2025, 7:00 PM. Item two, discussion and possible action on tonight's agenda. I have a motion by Eric, second by Carla. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Motion carries. Item three, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the silent devotion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of justice for all.
Please take a few moments of silent devotion. Amen. Item four, our student spotlight is Boingsville Elementary and Bath County Middle School.
Good evening. We're recognizing two groups tonight. We're recognizing members from our academic team and also STLP. Before we recognize these students though, I'd just like to comment that they're excellent middle school students, attendance, behavior, grades in school, but then also they're very hardworking at school, but in any extra activities as well. But when we recognize our students, we'd also like to take the time to appreciate the time and work that our coaches put in and also our parents. So we are actually going to start with our academic team, our coaches. We had two new coaches this year, Ms. Samantha Thompson and Ms. Virginia Nip. Both of them are sick tonight, so they couldn't be here. And Ms. McKinney also helped us well. So I'm going to go through the information that they gave me. So for the academic team, we had four students who actually placed in district, regional, and also we had two who went to state. So I'm just going to go through that information. First of all, we had Emma Conyers. She did place at districts first in language arts. Then she went on to regionals and tested first in language arts, and then she moved on, advanced to state. The next student is Emma Johnson. She placed third in language arts and fifth in social studies. At regional, she also tested in language arts and social studies. Our next student is Macy Johnson. She did test in written composition. So in district, she took fourth place. In regional, she took fifth place, and then she advanced to state. Ryland Hilton is our last student, and at district, he placed fourth in math and fifth in language arts. He did go on to test in math and arts and humanities in regionals. So at this time, we do have just a few of those students here with us. All of these students that we're recognizing tonight are eighth graders, and we are really going to miss them next year. And I do want to make one comment that their coach told me. So we had a meet, a match that was rescheduled, and instead of them being frustrated, one of the students said, "That's great. It just gives me more time to study." So it shows how these students are. But at this time, I would like to recognize the students that we do have here tonight. So we're going to start with Ms. Emma Conyers. And then we also have Ms. Emma Johnson. And once again, our two students who could not be here tonight are Macy Johnson and Ryland Hilton. The next group that we're going to recognize is STLP, and our coach, Ms. Mandy Baumann, is actually here to talk about them a little bit. And I do see Ms. McKinney back in the crowd. I don't want to put a lot of attention on her, but we do want to say thank you to Ms. McKinney for her help with coaching this year too. But I do want to say before Ms. Baumann comes up here that this is the first time that we've had a state winner place in STLP since before COVID. So it has been a while, so it's a big deal. And we're all very proud of all of these students.
Out of the four projects that the middle school took to state, one of them placed second place overall with her AI on-demand challenge, and the theme was Twisted Fairy Tale, and she did a phenomenal retelling of Little Red Riding Hood. I will share that with our district so they can see how hard she worked on that. So the other projects unfortunately didn't place, but we know what to do for next time to get more of our kiddos on the stage. So will Kenzie Hefner please come down? Once again, please give a round of applause for our academic team students and our STLP student. Thank you.
We also have the same two groups to be recognized. At OES, we have our academic team and our STLP. We had one student, Serena Carter, that placed second at state in STLP last week. Unfortunately, her mom was called into work right before the meeting started, so she didn't get to come. But she placed second in a cover, book cover for K-5 students. So we were very proud of her to get to watch, walk across the stage. And we'd like to recognize our academic team. Our coach, Shannon Hill, is here with us tonight, and if she will come down. And all of our academic team members that were able to be here with us, come on down. Ms. Hill does a phenomenal job with academic team. She's coached it for several years, and the students always do very well.
I do not do so well with remembering things, so I'm going to read from my phone. I'm very proud of this group. We've worked really hard. And a lot of people don't understand that these are students that sit in the classroom sometimes that are bored because they know everything the teacher's teaching already. And so this academic team is one time where they're challenged, and they seem to really like it, right guys? Okay, so at regionals, we placed first. Give me one second. First in FPS, first place overall. First place math went to Chase Munir. Third place in math went to David Thatcher. He's unable to be here tonight. First place in arts and humanities went to Malley McKinney. Kaylee, you want to come get her certificate? Kaylee, you want to come get her certificate? Okay. Second place language arts also went to Chase Munir. Second place in social studies went to Georgia Thatcher. Second place science went to Jordan Jones, who's unable to be here tonight. Fifth place science went to David Thatcher, who's unable to be here tonight. A lot of our kids are also on the drama club, so they had an event tonight, and that's why they weren't here. FPS was Carter Henson and Paisley Clark. Did I forget anybody? Okay. So they were first place in that. And then we went on to regionals, and at regionals we went against 16 teams. We came in fifth overall. Our FPS team came in fourth overall. Social studies, Mailey, I'm sorry, Georgia Thatcher was fifth place. Mailey McKinney was first place in language arts. Arts and humanities, fifth place, Kayla McKin, Kayla, Ma, Mailey McKinney, let me get it right. It takes a team effort to win these awards, and I'm so proud of each and every one of these kids. They all had a part in our success. Thank you.
Item five, superintendent and board communication.
Tonight, I just want to talk about a few things that do deal with social media. One of the issues that we face as a school district is not necessarily when children post things to social media, it's when adults post things to social media. So one of the things that has happened in the past, we've had threats that were made. Some of those were major. We had some at the high school last year. It turned out to be false, they came out of California or Colorado. But what happens is when we receive a threat, we take it very, very seriously. Some of those threats are very minor, like a kindergarten kid gets mad and just says like, "I'm going to blow the school up." We deal with that, there's a consequence that comes with that, but we also look into things. So when a threat's made, we do background checks, we look into mental health, we do safety checks, do the kids have access? But we address those issues. And one of the issues that we face is how to report those issues out to the public. And so when it is a school-wide issue, we put the notice out to let everybody know all is well. Sometimes we have an issue that's just inside a classroom or with a small group of kids, and we try to contact those parents, so that we don't allow time for rumors or problems to expand. What has happened that we've experienced is that we address the situation, we make contacts, but then adults, some not even associated with our district, will go on Facebook most often and put things out there, like, "Oh, someone's going to bring a gun to school tomorrow." If we knew that that was a serious threat, we would take care of it. We would shut school down. We would not allow anything to happen to your children. We had a transformer blow a couple years ago at OES, sounded like a gunshot. We had kids on the playground, we had teachers running, taking care of their kids, putting them in the, they were beside the bus garage when they had their own children inside the building, not knowing what was going on. These teachers will die for your kids. If there is an issue, if you hear something, I simply ask that you call the school or the central office, and we will address it. If you think someone's really going to bring a gun to school, you don't post it on Facebook, you call the police or you call the school. And so what's happening is these things are just getting blown out of proportion when there's no, there's no issue or under control. And so we will try to put things out on Facebook when issues arrive. I just ask if you hear something or see something and you're concerned, you can call us and follow, but please don't post something that you're not 100% sure about, because it causes more concern. Parents keep their kids home from school, thinking they're doing the right thing, and I have no issue with that, but they're missing a day of school when there was never an issue to start with, or the issue has been taken care of. So I just simply ask the public to please, before you post something, please think about it, the consequences, and if you're truly concerned, give us a call, and we'll gladly address it and let you know the situation. But if there ever were a sincerely serious threat, we would cancel school, or we would have, would let you know, and we would take whatever steps necessary to protect your children. So that's what I just wanted to share. Thank you all, that concludes my report.
Item six, discussion and possible action on approving the following items. A, April 17th, 2025 minutes. B, March financial statement. C, claims. D, superintendent expenditures. E, use of facilities. F, travel. G, grants. H, review of monthly financial reports of all funds. I, pay bills through April 30th, 2025. J, Western Kentucky University memorandum of agreement. K, University of Kentucky Clinical Practice Agreement, 2025, '26 school year. L, summer feeding. M, KEDC 25, '26 membership agreement. N, University of Arkansas Nursing Agreement. O, temporary relocation of Head Start students with disabilities to OES. P, school age childcare and adult care food program for 25, '26 school year. Q, 504 Chair Person Presented for the 25, '26 school year. R, Admissions and Release Committee, ARC, as presented for the 2025, '26 school year. S, May 1, 2025 Staffing allocations. T, Job Description for Office Manager/Program Assistant. U, Job Description for Payroll and Grants Analysis. V, Kentucky Department of Education Indirect Cost Report for the 2025, '26 school year. W, Principals Combining Budgets. X, Approve the Physical Year 2025 Audit with KGSG/PSC at $17,500 as previously approved. Y, 2025, 2026 District Technology Plan. Z, Bidding for Services for the 25, '26 school year was awarded to the baseball team. AA is the surplus sale.
I'll make a motion to approve 6A through 68A.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric. All in favor, please signify by saying, I'm sorry, do we have any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. We don't have any public comments. Item eight, discussion and possible action on rescinding the old BG1 on the Bath County Middle School and approving the new one for the middle school.
I make a motion to rescind the old one.
I'll make a motion to rescind version B and to approve version A. Of the BG1 for the BCMS.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, discussion and possible action of the Air Source Technologies Proposal for an Abatement/Renovation Survey and Consultation Services associated with Bath County Middle School's renovation.
I'll make the motion to approve the Air Source Technology Proposal for the Abatement/Renovation Survey and Consultation Services associated with Bath County Middle School renovation.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, discussion and possible action to approve the second reading of Policy 03.273, Classified Retirement.
I'll make that motion to approve the second reading of Policy 03.273, Classified Retirement.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, discussion and possible action to approve the FY '26 Salary Schedules.
I'll make the motion to approve the FY '26 Salary Schedules.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, discussion and possible action on the abolishment of two district intervention positions.
I'll make the motion to abolish the two district intervention positions.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. I make the motion to go into executive session pursuant to KRS 156.557, 6E, Evaluation of the Superintendent and KRS 61.810, 1F Personnel.
Second.
Have a motion by Barbara, a second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion to go in executive session. I'm not going to take that out, I'll take, just take that vote.
Item fourteen, I make a motion to come out of executive session and discuss the superintendent evaluation. The board evaluated Superintendent Steven Evans in standard one and standard two exemplary and in standard four accomplished.
Second.
I have a motion by Barbara, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, opposed motion carries. I'd like to read a summary of our evaluation. As Superintendent of Bath County Schools, Mr. Evans has prioritized establishing a clear shared vision that guides the work of all staff and aligns with our district mission. He has supported principals in becoming instructional leaders by providing coaching and access to instructional resources and development opportunities. He has also worked closely, I'm sorry, he has successfully pursued grant opportunities engaged in long range facilities planning to ensure safe modern learning environments. Our transportation, nutrition, and maintenance departments have made service improvements while operating within budget constraints. Any other business? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Barbara to adjourn, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, opposed motion carries, we're adjourned.
Thank you all, appreciate very much.